At this time, I'll call the October 3, 2019 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. And today, we have many special guests, but among the guests, we have some 4Hers. And so our flag salute is ready to come up next, and they're going to go ahead and lead us in the flag salute. So would everybody else please stand up and join them when they're ready to start this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you. And we do have some 4Hers with us today, and then we have a proclamation a little bit later, so we'll hear more about 4H and also from our guests here. The next item we have on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and there are no additions, and so I would move that we approve the agenda as printed.
And I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda. Any question or discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of September 26 meeting, the payroll of $283,771.76, wire payments, and this also includes from Capers, $45,172.58, and utilities of $9,411.18.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
We have the motion, and I'll second it, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Usually, we have three county commissioners up here, and Craig Chamberlain is one of our county commissioners, but he attended, he's attending a funeral this morning from a family member, and so he's not with us. And typically, as long as we have two commissioners here, that represents a quorum or a majority, so we can still conduct business with just the two of us here. And so Mr. Roller and myself will continue along those lines. The next item we have on the agenda is commission comments or reports. So Ron, do you have anything you'd like to mention at this time?
Yes, I do. I'm on the committee with the North Central Regional Detention Center, and just recently, a senate bill, 367, was passed that was supposed to help reduce the number of occupants in that facility, and in fact, it had an adverse effect on it. So what we're seeing right now is that Gary County's facility is becoming quite full, and it's going to be something of interest to Dickinson County of what will we do if indeed we can't send juveniles to that particular detention center. So all the particulars are going to be worked out. Financially, they're doing well, but unfortunately, we don't like to hear that as far as doing well, because that means people are using it, and we like to see people out there and be more productive than sitting in the jail. So again, that's something of concern to about any other counties also, so I just want to let everybody know that that's something we need to work on.
Okay. And the only thing I have, just a couple of things. On October 12, I'll be participating in some of the Eisenhower activities. The foundation is having a dinner that evening at the Eisenhower Presidential Library and Museum. And then also, the following day, on October 13, one of the boards I serve on to represent the county is Central Kansas Mental Health, and they have an office here, but they also, their main office is over at Slinas. So I'll be attending a board meeting for that, but I serve on that board, but on October 13, there's also a conference in Wichita regarding addiction and recovery. So there's information about some of the problems and challenges faced in that area, and they're going to have some people that are judges, attorneys, business people, and bringing people, and it's going to be a statewide type conference, so I plan to attend that. At this time, we have a portion here where there's public comments, and if there's someone here that would want to make a comment or have a question, this is the time we do it if it's something that is not on the agenda. And if you would want to make a comment, there's opportunity, because this is a public meeting, to go to the podium, introduce yourself by name and your address, and have a comment or question, and so that's always part of our meeting. And typically, we do not have anyone make comments, but also, sometimes people send us a letter, or they'll make a comment outside the meeting if they have a question about what the county commission is doing or a particular issue. Okay. An exciting part of today is we do have a proclamation, because this is October 6 through 12 is Dixon County 4H Week, and so we're glad to have so many of you as guests here. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and so for those of you that are here for the proclamation, if you'd want to go ahead and come forward now, you could, and just line up behind us, and we'll read the proclamation, and then we'll have some comments from you, our guests. And you can kind of come all the way to the end, and since Craig isn't here, someone can sit in his chair.
That sounds fun.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read this first. 2019 is National 4H Week, and this proclamation is by the Board of Commissioners of Dixon County, Kansas. Whereas 4H is the America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly 6 million youth across the country, and whereas 4H has helped youth in Dixon County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas 4H is delivered by the cooperative extension, a community of more than 100 public land-grant universities across the nation that provides experiences, where young people learn by doing in hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and civic engagement. And whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids to do and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Dixon County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas 4H's network of nearly 500,000 volunteers and 3,500 professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now, therefore, we, the commissioners of Dixon County, do hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2019, as Dixon County 4H Week, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the 4H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. This is done the third day of October 2019, and I'll go ahead and move that we do accept and adopt this proclamation at this time.
And I'll accept it. Second it.
We have the second for acceptance of the proclamation and to move forward with it. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll go ahead and sign this. You can take it with you at this time, and if you wanted to bring it back, you could, and Craig will sign it next week, or you can wait till next week to have all three of our signatures. And as the proclamation mentions, I mean, we're very pleased and proud of what 4H does here, and all the efforts that all of you do. I mean, it's amazing, because it brings families together, it brings communities together, and there's just, it's so, we're very proud of all of you. Jill, would you want to make some comments? And then after she makes some comments, I'd like to have everybody here introduce themselves and maybe tell a little bit about what you do in 4H. But Jill, I'll give you this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We definitely appreciate the commission's support of 4H and of Dickinson County 4H and the strong legacy that we have of 4H here in the county, as well as what we hope to accomplish in the future. Lots going on. We always want to grow and change and make things better, because that's our motto, right, guys? To make the best.
Better.
Yes.
And I like the motto, and thank you for leading the pledge of allegiance this morning too, and the idea to go ahead and follow through with your motto, because that's something you do at a regular meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's how we close every meeting, so. Do we want to get one picture, and then we'll have you guys step out, so you can face the commissioners when you talk to them? Janessa, do you want to hold this right there while Kathy takes our picture?
Yeah.
There you go.
I'm gonna take several.
That's good. Okay, let's help her do her photo. Okay, let's step out here, we can introduce ourselves.
Yeah, so you could kind of step up there where the podium is and face the audience, but also face us at the same time.
Right there, and get a little video.
Oh, okay. Yes, right there is good.
Yeah, right there, guys? Do you want to think about telling your favorite 4H projects, or what you like doing at 4H? Do you want to hold that? Okay. Do you want to start us?
Where's the podium?
Oh, okay. Amber, you want to?
I don't have any projects.
Tell me you're going to do a clover bud this year. You want to do that? But you've already participated.
Okay, and if you speak up, that way I can hear and all of us can hear.
I'm going to do a clover bud this year.
And what's your name?
Vanessa.
And what's your last name?
Latsky.
And what club are you a part of?
Um, Nirvar Boosters.
Very good.
My name is Autumn Lovish, and this is, and my favorite project was bucket cap.
Favorite project was bucket cap. Very good. And anything else that, because was this your first big year in 4H? Last year was. This year? This year was first year, and what other projects besides bucket cap?
Providing magazines.
Okay. How did foods go? Did you get to try lots of things, lots of recipes? Those are good. Very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Justin Latsky, and I'm from Nirvar Boosters. My favorite project is geology. I took it to state the fir, my first year and my second year.
What kind of ribbons did you get at state?
I got a blue this year, and I got purple last year.
Hi, my name is Jay Slatsky. I did, this year I did a pumpkin. I took it to open class. I, I registered it for largest pumpkin, and I won per, blue.
Great.
I'm Michael Hall. I'm the outgoing Dickinson County Council President. I've been in horticulture, leadership, citizenship, photography, and foods and nutrition.
And your club is?
Chapman Cheerbox.
And Jill, I know at some previous meetings that we've had here at the county, we've talked about, or you've mentioned how Dixon County compares across the state, and I've always been encouraged by, the numbers just seem outstanding, but can you give us some of that information?
Yeah. So our, generally, our number of community club members is usually around 325 members. We've maintained that for many years. And then we also have several kind of outreach, you know, school enrichment type activities that help to reach kids in schools, and that are not part of the community club experience. So we have 12 community clubs in Dickinson County, and then school enrichment opportunities. And the last count that we did for the 4H year that we just finished, because we go October 1 to September 30, so the year that we just finished, we reached almost 60% of the kids in Dickinson County with some type of 4H youth development experience, and so that's really exciting. Part of this past year was, did all of you get a chance to be part of the Native Bee Challenge and learn about native bees? So we had the Ag Innovators Program, which was nationally funded, and that gave us a real opportunity to reach even more kids with that really neat program that we had available, so that's been really exciting.
I know from visiting with some friends around the community and so on, that often they'll talk, as adults, they talk about their 4H experiences when they were younger and how much it prepared them for just everything they do in life, and then the fun that they had as a group while they were having adventures and learning, you might say. So enjoy this, this time, and Jill, thank you for all your work and help.
Absolutely. Thank you for your support. We appreciate it. Is it okay if I leave for pick to sign? And I'll pick up next week? Okay, perfect. We'll just lay down.
Yep. Okay, thank you. At this time, the next item we have on the agenda is reports from county officers, and our county administrator is Brad Holman, so at this time, we'll hear from Brad.
Okay, we discussed briefly in the work session, the upcoming county, regional county commission meeting, which will be set for October 22 at 6 o'clock at Munson's in Johnson City. That's hosted by Gary County this time, so I'm assuming all three of you will want to attend that, so I'll get us RSP with them. In your package, you've got a copy of the year-to-date staffing reports from Diane. As you'll see, we've again had some activities, well, we're, and some employees that have left, and we've also had to hire one in 911 and the Royal Bridge. Martin was fortunate to get one personally, he can't easily leave the two or three still down, but we're plugging away and continuing to try to fill those up for vacancies, so. The utility work outside, if you notice coming in, continues to work and plug along. Just this morning, they were removing a door in the basement on the east side of the building in preparation for closing off that old stairwell and starting to do the activation and site work. So as it stands right now, either Monday or Tuesday of next week, West Star will be switching over from the current power lines over to the new power, the underground power source. We'll be coordinating with, with them to let staff know it'll be after 5 o'clock, so we'll make sure we get everything shut down that we can shut down. There is a jury trial scheduled for Monday and Tuesday, so we will coordinate it around that, so we don't shut the power off at 5:30 in the middle of jury trial that's going over. And we're also coordinating with staff to make sure the parking lot's left as accessible as we can to get staff to park elsewhere on Monday and Tuesday for that reason, so. The last thing is, we completed, earlier this week, completed the bridge replacement on Oak Road to South of Hope, and I was down yesterday and looked at that, and of course, Martin reported, everything went well, and that's, that is a fish passage project, so federal government paid for all the materials on that through U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but the guys did an excellent job, and it's completed, so that road's back over. And that's all I've got for you.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on, notices and communications, and we did receive some information from the conservation district, and just kind of an update. And then we also received a, a letter from Senator Pat Roberts, and it has to do with just kind of a contact that Brian Murty is the acting state hazard mitigation officer, and so it's just giving us information, because there appears there could be some federal funds that are going to come available to communities that either had severe storms or straight-lined winds, flooding, landslides, and mudslides, and it has the dates of April 28 through July 12, 2019. Of course, as a county, we've been very active in trying to document everything we have so we can have that information available, and hopefully, if there are funds that, that are applicable, that we would qualify for, we want to be able to, be in a position to receive those. Also, we have a letter from the county news, and that is a national association of counties I didn't receive any other notices or communications, and Ron, I've.
I have not either.
Okay. And as I mentioned earlier, sometimes someone will get ahold of us, and we certainly want to bring that information forward, if there is anything for discussion, or just to bring us all up to speed and date on that. Okay, the next item we have is a resolution. This is to decrease the speed limit in the 1900 block of Hawk Road and 2000 Avenue. Brad, do you have some additional information on that?
Yeah, this is, was brought about as a result of some concerns and calls that we had gotten regarding the, that particular section of road with the increase in the housing that's going in out there in over the past few years, the developments that the Brown Foundation is doing, and just the number of traffic, the number of vehicles that are out there. Martin's taking a look at it, and we actually grilled it a few times, and I think it makes total sense to reduce that speed limit out there because of the, all the above, so it's a very short section of road. There's really no need right now. It's posted for 55. It has been historically, reducing it, we feel like would make a, make a lot more sense to improve the safety factor in, to the people that are going in that area and so.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 100319, and this is establishing the new speed limit, 40 mile per hour, for Hawk Road and 2000 Avenue.
I'll second the resolution.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have is to review and consider the approval of the CUP for Brown Foundation duplexes, and so we'll have, do you have a report on this conditional use permit?
Yes. I would, and basically, this, the reason this is going before you is because, you know, duplex, it's a residential-type facility. Our code requires, does require that a new duplex going in requires a conditional use permit. However, is the past couple of years, we, because of where this, where these particular units are going, there's already a multi-unit facility on that property, and therefore, it's been there for years, and therefore, the approved, though if you've been out to Browns and you've seen what they've been building with those duplexes, they've got two buildings out there that staff approved over the past couple of years. These are considered accessory to the principal use, the principal use being the home. And so at that point, what we did is, we said, well, what will trigger a public hearing? And we said, and to be consistent with what we've done with other type of residential subdivisions, we've said, well, we'll just use traffic count and, you know, or the number of units that are being considered, of like in this particular case, for duplexes, they're the same as single-family homes as far as the amount of traffic. So there's two vehicles per unit, or two vehicles per lot, whichever, you know, you want to look at. And I think to be consistent with what we brought before you before for consideration for these subdivisions, John Goff and I, I'm using kind of his, you know, his, his advice on some of this, and once you get to about 12 cars, 12 additional cars or vehicles on the property, or within a subdivision, then you, it might trigger that, like a public hearing, you know, that would require the planning commission to look and see if there's any additional traffic studies that have to be done. Considering the, the nature of this facility, that it is pretty much a self-contained unit, one of the conditions, I'm kind of going to update each one of these conditions that we put on there, the, the planning commission has, and staff is recommending approval to move forward for the project that they are wanting to, to do over at Browns. They're, they're wanting to basically put in, right now initially, four additional units. They've got two that are not even permitted through a permit, and as soon as they, you know, as I told them, I said, before we go any further with those other two units that you're wanting to build, you're going to have to go through the public hearing. So, and that's why, why this is before you, to kind of update you on, they've been very forthcoming in providing you with information, and as well as Kau Valley and, and his developer as well, his builder, Mike Wilson, has been providing you with all the information. So since that public hearing earlier last month with the planning commission, the conditions that you see on this conditional use permit, I'll just go through them, no further building permits will be issued beyond the single duplex structure currently applied for underbuilding permit DK 19-45 until a full site plan is submitted for staff review. That site plan has been submitted and has been currently under review. We've been working, I've been working with the mapping department, as well as Phil, I think, has been working with the GIS department and myself on making sure that these conditions are met. There's a drainage study, the drainage study that, that I was requesting as the condition has been submitted. It's basically a drainage plan, and it's for, usually, those are for like staff review. And that's, that has been submitted. Now, on your copy that I've got, I've got a traffic study as a condition under number Staff feels that that, you may want to, based on information that was, you know, revealed both at the planning commission hearing, and since evaluating what they're proposing, and the fact that this is a self-contained unit, traffic patterns aren't exactly like a subdivision, where it's, you know, everybody, you're not going to have people going in and out at 7 and 5 every day, you know, into that, onto that property. And, and the fact that it is more of a, I want to say critical care, or a, a facility for those who are, you know, aged, or, but I said, it's a, it is, it's self-contained, and therefore, we, we feel that if you choose, you can go ahead and remove that condition of the, of the traffic study for that particular, or push it off until, you know, and they build any further units. But right now, based on what they've submitted and where they're anticipating, they're anticipating for, they said, if, if they actually build it, and I'm sure Phil will explain it, if they decided to expand beyond where they're at now, would be to the south, there would be four additional duplex units that would be built, that's according to, you know, the Brown Memorial Foundation, they said that that's going to be for a lot. So staff has, has found that all units must be arranged and located on the parcels so that an adequate address, consistent with the requirements of Dickinson County nun and 911 dispatch can be assigned. That is in progress, and that is, again, the, Phil has met with GIS, and we've named those streets that I think you all have acted on already. The only item left would be environmental services or KDAG to verify the capacity of the current sewer system for any additional units, and I think that's, I think Randy Barton, I spoke with him, and he said that that's more of a KDAG thing, because they've got their own system. So, but he'll check it out, I think he said he'll, he'll go and verify anyway. But with that, staff and, like I said, the planning commission are recommending approval of moving forward with these additional units that they're proposing. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to, you know, you guys, or if you have any other additional comments, or.
The only thing I mentioned earlier, when you had the meeting, neighbors close by were notified, so they're aware of the developments, and it has been in the newspaper also, but there, it's notification.
Right.
To concerned parties.
And their main concern, the public's main concern was the, the traffic, and the main thing that came up was the speed limit situation on that stretch that you guys just made a point on. And so I think between that and, like I say, the nature of this use, the fact that it's not a residential. not a residential-type subdivision, where you're going to have, you know, a certain traffic pattern at certain times of day, this is, I would say, you know, if you so choose, you can, if you recommend approval, that item number one, that condition for the traffic study, if you so choose, can be removed.
Okay, thank you. Phil, do you have any comment, or I know you're here to answer questions, if we'd have any, too, so.
No, I really don't have any comments. I think we've submitted everything that's out of store.
Okay.
If there's anything else, we'll go out and do that.
And just kind of helping Barb out here as clerk, just to show it on the record, you're the president?
I'm the foundation.
Is it a molynecks of Brown Memorial Foundation? Okay. Well, I certainly have a great appreciation for what the Brown Memorial Foundation has done over the years and continues to do, and it's a great asset for Dixon County, and, you know, sure, it's, it's kind of an ongoing. Giving back in partnership with the county and citizens.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, you've kind of alluded to it a couple of times, that the traffic study part, that we could go ahead and delete that from the.
Correct.
From the conditional use permit. And I would go ahead and move that we do grant the conditional use permit, PC nineteen dash five, regarding Brown Memorial Foundation and the approval of their duplex units, and that we would go ahead and remove the portion about end traffic study from the permit, so that.
You mind if I approach real quick? I've got the revised.
Oh, you have revised?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just in case you.
Okay. Yes, that's helpful, thank you. Sorry, that's my motion, the revised one, that leaves off the traffic study.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And I'll sign this, and then the zoning administrator can sign it, and I think we're all set then. Okay, we just have a few more items for today's meeting. Consider the appointment of a voting delegate and alternates for the K Camp Annual Meeting. I'll go ahead and move that I be the voting delegate, or, let me take that back. I'll move that Craig Chamberlain be the voting delegate, to reward him for not being here today, and I'll serve as the alternate for the K Camp Annual Meeting.
And I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And be sure and congratulate Craig on that. The next time we have is to consider resignation of Larry Miller, New Bern Township Treasurer.
I move to accept that resignation for Larry Miller.
Second. We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the second part of that is, we do have that resignation and an opening, so I would move that we appoint Dee Greeno to New Bern Township Treasurer.
I'll second that.
So we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And I don't think there's any other business, so.
I move to adjourn.
We have the motion for adjournment. I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.